I'd like to call, order today, the, um, today, Tuesday, August 6th, Commissioners Meeting. Let's please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we'll say a prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our Heavenly Father, we come before you today to give you honor and praise. You are worthy of praise. You are the source of our blessings. Thank you for every gift we have been given. We thank you for the opportunity to come together this day. We ask for your hand of blessings on this meeting. We ask that you would guide and direct our meeting so that it is full of wisdom, productivity, and respect for one another. Thank you for helping us to accomplish our work and our goals this day. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. Okay. Going on to the, A, the major agenda item, A, first order of business is opening and reading of bids and letters. We have none, so we will move on to the next major agenda, item B, reports and requests from the Commissioners. The Accounts Payable Docket, is there a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion, approve the Accounts Payable Docket, as outlined.
I second that. Any comments? No comments? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, very good. All pass. You know, I didn't want to welc- I wanted to welcome everybody for coming too, so I'm glad you're all here. Thank you for coming.
And you're also welcome to comment when she asks.
Absolutely, mhm. Um, B, engagement letter for legal services relating to the Saint Mary's 2019 bond issue. And I know that Attorney Jamie Woods has some, uh, addresses to make.
Just so you know, um, this is consistent with past, past practice of the county. The county is only serving as a conduit for the issuance of these bonds. Uh, this is a bond issuance of approximately fifty-one and a half million dollars. About thirty million of that, not to exceed thirty million of that, will be used by the campus to really undergo a pretty thorough renovation of the, the campus project, uh, facility out there, touching almost every building, if I understand correctly. Then, the remaining amount will go to refund a series of bonds that were issued in two thousand and ten and from nineteen ninety-eight. By refunding those bonds with the favorable interest rates that we have now, the camp, the, the college will save, um, over two million dollars in interest, um, on those payments. So this is very favorable to the university. The university employs four hundred and twelve people on a full-time basis and a hundred and fifty-eight people on a part-time basis here in Saint Joseph County, Indiana. So they have a large workforce, and this will benefit them, it'll benefit the students who are coming to the county, county, uh, campus, as well, it'll benefit, um, laborers here in Saint Joseph County that will be doing that work. The reason I bring this to you, um, is for the approval, is just keep in mind, my fees are not paid by the county. My fees are paid by the university at closing. However, consistent with past practice, because, uh, the county attorney's office, um, has done this in the past, I want to make you aware of the fees that we're receiving. So I would, um, just advise you that you're not on the hook for this, that the county or campus is paying for it, just like the bonds. The, you know, the county is not responsible for the bonds. We only serve as the intermediary, intermediary conduit issuer on them. So, I'm happy to answer any other questions. The Economic Development Commission of Saint Joseph County met this morning, approved a resolution, uh, with the project, approving, uh, the fund, the funding and the funding, and it will go to the county council for the next step.
Okay, is there a motion?
Her comments or some questions?
Motion, they don't have to comment.
Okay, that's different than Randy, Andy does it, which I agree with.
Okay.
I make a motion, uh, 'cause you shouldn't have a discussion on something unless there's a motion.
That's what I've read.
Yeah, and, and you and I agree on that, and Bob and Co. what's agreed on, Andy don't agree on that. Anyway, so yes, I make a motion, we approve, uh, the request, uh, the contract for Thorn and Grandark is outlined.
And I second that motion. Now, are there any comments?
Comments and questions? Uh, Counselor, uh, I thank you for this, bringing this to our attention. And for people that are new to county government, uh, and don't understand it quite fully, I just reiterate your last few sentences, that the county is not paying your legal fees. The county is not even on the hook. Their liability of this fifty-one, five million dollars. Uh, this is something that's done customarily for local community trusts, like universities and hospitals, so they can get better, uh, premiums when they sell their bonds. So, uh, sometimes it might even be a tax-free status.
That's exactly right.
So, so by going through the county and just getting our, hey, we believe this is a good organization, or this is important to community development, uh, giving them a, you know, we have no liability, but we help our, our, our local entities save money and sell their bu- bonds much faster. So an investor would say, hey, these are reputable bonds, this isn't Joe Schmo's hedge company.
Yeah, it has no impact on the citizens of Saint Joseph County, nor does it-
But the benefits.
Well, there's other than the benefits, but it does impact, does not even impact the overall ability of the county to borrow money or bond money on an ongoing basis, so it's really has no net effect on the county.
Yeah, and no liability.
And no liability.
Thank you.
And helping Saint Mary's, it's great. I'm glad we're able to do that.
Yeah, anyway, sometimes we'll do it for Memorial Hospital, St. Joe Hospital, uh, Notre Dame, uh, commu- big community trust organizations.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it, motion moved forward, very good. All right, next thing is Department of Procurement. Bree?
Bree Roberts, Director of Procurement with offices here in this building, seventh floor. Um, so the two quotes that were submitted for this printed materials bid for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, um, have been analyzed, lowest quotes provided on the attached spreadsheet. Um, again, conversely from previous years, this was, um, awarded, is to be awarded this year, by-line item, and that was in an effort to get lowest quotes across the board, not having to accept them by section. Um, and I think we did achieve that. Um, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Did you design the spreadsheet on page two of the presentation? That is a very well-made spreadsheet.
Thank you.
I don't see that quality very often, uh, so I, I have to compliment it. Uh, and as an accountant, I know, like, you got the negative numbers in red, and that's a good thing, but some departments don't have color printers, so sometimes I, I always make sure people remember that sometimes you get one in a bracket for people with black and white, or a fax machine that's black and white. But a very well-designed spreadsheet, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I appreciate everything that you've done, and that, um, make sure you got the, um, least amount, and we're gonna be saving some money, so that's good. All right, any motion?
I make a motion, accept all bids, as outlined by the Director of Department of Procurement, Bree Roberts, as outlined.
I second that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you again. Okay, next would be Emergency Management. Anybody here for any comments about that? Having none, there's the request approval for lease of the antenna tower space. So we're gonna have to amend that, um, so, any other comments or questions about that?
You know, I, you know, I forgot that I did have some questions, and I didn't get a chance to talk with legal. You know, my, one of my concerns was, this was the tower that was in Jewel Woods, and, and it was, I think, damaged in the, the massive flooding. Um, did the county or FEMA repair for that flooding, or did the owner of this tower for leasing space? Um, and it looks like there's an automatic renewal in three years. I'm not necessarily against the automatic renewal, I just wanna make sure, I guess I was just wondering, you know, if we, if we paid for the repairs after the flood, or if FEMA did or something, and maybe, or should we be dialed some greater benefit?
Yeah, I don't think FEMA paid for anything as far as it would relate to that tower at this moment in time, but if you have questions on that, I would, I'd ask that you would table this item and direct them to Mr. Antonucci, and he can get those answered for you.
Yeah, I had even made a suggestion that, um, we have him show up, but-
Right.
He didn't show up, so-
You, you don't wanna field any of these questions, Ms. Clark.
I'm not privy to this conversation.
Okay, all right then.
All right, is there a motion to table?
Motion to table?
Second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, this will be tabled. I had a question about that too, good.
And we'll ask Marie to please send, uh, an email to Mr. Antonucci with, Mr. Cummings, my concerns. If you need to reiterate the matter for the meeting, please do. Thank you.
Thank you. All righty, and the next will be the PSAP, Request Approval of Extension of the PSAP Lease Escrow Agreement. Somebody's here gonna make a comment.
John Murphy from the Auditor's Office on the second floor. I filed this on behalf of the PSAP Center. When the center opened, we had two leases, one for twelve million dollars, one for two-point-five million dollars for technology equipment. The proceeds were put into escrow accounts, and not all of the escrow account money has been spent yet. The majority has been spent, but some has not. In the original lease, there's a balance of, uh, eight thousand, six hundred and one dollars remaining, and in the amended lease amount, there's two hundred and fifty-one thousand, one-twenty-two. This extends, this, uh, modification of the contract extends the time period in which they can spend the lease escrow money to December third. So, we'll try to get that spent by then. I'll raise careful on what he spends the money for, obviously. So, it may be a case that if it's not spent at that point, we'll have to extend it again. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
I thank the Honorable Assistant Director, Deputy Director of the Auditor's Off- Auditor's Office for the complete report and cleaning up this, uh, escrow account.
I agree, okay, is there a motion?
I make, I make a motion, accept the recommendation of the Deputy Auditor, uh, as outlined.
I second that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it. Good ayes. I got glasses.
Me too. I make three.
All right, Department Infrastructure Planning and Growth. And the first one would be the Consent Agenda. And the Consent Agenda is Irrevocable Standby Letter of Credit. Vernus Woods, Section One, Irrevocable Standby Letter of Credit from Greystone, Irrevocable Standby Letter of Credit for Nature's Gate. And then you have the Saint Pious Church Flying Lion Five K Race and One Mile Fun Run Walk on August twenty-fourth, twenty nineteen. Okay, all those in, motion to approve it, or any comments?
Oh, you want to comment, comments? Uh, just on the letters of credit, uh, thank the Madam Engineer and her staff for keeping track of these letters of credit. Uh, their expiration dates, dollar amounts are always changing, what the, uh, the work they cover is sometimes multiple in scope they have to keep track of, and, and they do a great job of making sure that, uh, developers pay their fair share when they make our infrastructure larger. And under the Special Events Request for Saint Pious the tenth, uh, obviously a great church, local church, doing a, a great fundraiser, it, it, it notes that the funds raised will be for the Catholic Youth Day twenty-twenty-two, the year twenty-twenty-two, which will be trips to Lisbon, Portugal, which is, uh, you know, and I'm sure people from Saint Pious and Saint Joseph County will represent America much better than some other people have been representing America in other countries, such as the tragedies in Italy and some other places.
So I'm glad they're also doing that as well, that fundraiser, so that's a good thing. All right, is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the Public Works Consent Agenda, as outlined.
All those in favor, say, oh, I second that, I'm sorry, I second that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, the ayes approve the Consent Agenda. And, second, B, is the NDOT Contract R dash three-seven-four-eight-O, McKinley Highway from Ash Road to Corn Street, Intersection Improvements with Traffic Signals. And there's some change orders there.
Good morning, Jessica Clark, County Engineer with the Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth, offices on the fourth, seventh, and eleventh floors of this building. Before you are various change orders, two, seven, ten, fourteen, and fifteen, for your consideration for this federal aid project. Uh, the majority of this work, again, was all necessary to, to complete the intersection reconstruction there at McKinley and Ash, and the overall contract itself is a decrease from the original contract amount. The revised contract amount to date is five million, six hundred and thirty-five thousand, twenty dollars and thirty-three cents, and we request your approval of these change orders.
All right, any comments or questions for her?
Thank you, Madam Engineer, thank you for these five change orders. Four of them, right on the, the surface, look very standard. Uh, the first one, number two, uh, concerned me, it looks like twenty-three thousand dollars, a lot of money, for some sewage work for a non-Saint Joe County resident, because it is a county line road project that working, well, we're wisely working together with Elkhart County, so that we get the eighty percent federal match, we're paying approximately ten percent, and Elkhart County's paying approximately ten percent, coming with our twenty percent match, instead of one of our counties coming up, having to pay twenty percent, or not having the project at all, because nobody's gonna invest twenty percent in a project, we only own half the land. But in this case, this parcel is, I think, the fifth parcel from the county line. It's concerned me, I wouldn't wanna spend twenty-three thousand dollars of taxpayers' money. Would this be reimbursed by NDOT or Elkhart or somebody?
So again, this is part of the partnership with us and Elkhart County, and specifically water and sewer fees were part of their share that they were paying for, so this is, this work is, is within the agreement with Elkhart.
Super, again, way to be diligent.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion that we approve the five, uh, outlines, or, excuse me, the five change orders as outlined in Indiana Contract Three-seven-four-eight-zero, as, as outlined.
Any other comments? I have a comment saying I'm excited that we're going to have a savings of point four-seven-seven percent. That's good. All right, and, um, so is there a s- motion, I second that motion, and there's a, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Okay, C, Request for Proposals and Advertisements for Various Federal Aid Projects.
Yes, we've got, uh, federal aid projects that are upcoming here that we need to have contracts in place for. Our Walnut Road Bridge Replacement over Yellow Bank Creek will be going to Lanning here this fall, and so we need to have the construction inspection contract in place. We receive funding to, uh, reconstruct the intersection at Cleveland and Beach with a roundabout, modern roundabout, and that project needs to, to start design, initiate the design and right-of-way services. And then we have our, our federally required bridge inspection biannual program. It does take approximately twelve months to process that contract through the state of Indiana, so we need to start now, because our next compliance date is September of twenty-twenty. So those are the three con- or the three RFPs that we are requesting for advert- advertisement. We'd like it to be advertised in the South Bend Tribune, Mishwak Enterprise, and Tri-County News this Friday. It is also posted on NDOT's website through their listserv, which goes out to every pre-qualified company within the state of Indiana, and we would request opening the letters of interest for the Walnut Project on Tuesday, August twenty-seventh, and then the letters for the bridge inspection in Cleveland and Beach on September tenth.
So we're going to, you're, we're actually going to be requesting for federal aid to support our projects?
Correct, we, we have secured federal aid for these projects, but now we have to follow through on the contracts.
Okay.
And we're, we are meeting the advertisement requirements.
Correct.
And, and you're aware that the two dates for them to respond are technically claims meetings dates, but you're comfortable with that, and you're hoping to expedite it to keep the ball rolling?
Correct.
Thank you, I'm comfortable with that too. Mr. Comfortable?
Yes, all right, is a motion?
I make a motion, we approve the Engineer's Request regarding the various requests for proposals, as outlined.
I'll second that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you, okay. Moving on to Major Agenda Item C, any old business? Are we old? Do you have any business? No? All right, we'll move on, uh, to any D, which is Public Comments. Any public comments?
I would make one, Madam Commissioner. And that is, for those who haven't noticed in the paper or the county website, uh, we are having in our September tax sale coming up. We have, uh, two thousand, eight hundred and twenty parcels, uh, which are great bargains for anybody wanting to look for a property to, and that has a, a structure already on it that just needs a little T C, tender care and love, and, uh, also maybe a field next to your property that you wanna expand, so that your children have more place to play, or, or put in a garden, what have you. So a lot of bargains there, uh, check 'em out.
I would agree with that.
Thank you.
Okay, good comments.
Thank you.
No other public comments? All right, we'll move on to Adjournment, is there a motion for recess?
Yeah, make a motion to, uh, recess and adjourn for the Portage Township Hearing.
I second that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All righty, I thank you so much for coming.
Thank you, everybody. Marie, I don't think you've ever, I don't think, you know, my phone can't blow things up. I mean, my text phone, have you ever set up for one of these before? Okay, yeah, you kind of move chairs around, and then both parties, Mr. Coleman? Jamie and McKinstry?
She was sitting there, I think.
Mr. Coleman? We probably need one more chair. Take care, Michael, thank you. Uh, one side's planted, one side's defended. Make it look equal, I guess.
Ms. McKinstry, just sit here.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike.
We'll put this, this was here. There you go. Okay, man.
Thank you.
One mic showing, uh, share.
Okay.
So if you guys will publicly order your office and do any comments, and we just follow it, okay?
Likewise, thank you.
Okay, that's all right, and I called it Township Trustee here, and according to township-
You should roll the population bottom here. And then you gotta read the, here's, read the case number.
Oh, okay.
And formally open the meeting. Play that stuff down.
I will. Okay. The reason is Portage Township Trustee, reason Jamie D. from Kin- that is not from Kin Street versus Portage Township Trustee, case number nineteen-one-thousand, seventeen-one zero zero.
One hundred.
One hundred.
Good morning, everyone, I'm Jamie Woods, I'm the Saint Joseph County Attorney. Just some preliminary matters, this is a formal hearing this morning, so we'll have just kind of a three-formative exchange with information. Um, the trustee will go first, if you have a comment, uh, a chance to reply, Ms. McKinstry. While everybody else is talking, while they're talking, while you're talking, please don't overtalk each other, okay? It's worked out much better, we can just hear from people one at a time. You will be sworn in this morning, I'm an attorney, I'm also a notary, so I'm allowed to administer oath. So everybody that's gonna tell me something this morning, please raise your right hands. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you brought to me this morning, is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you so much. So if I just could summarize the township's position, um, it's generally, Ms. McKinstry, it's the township's position that you have too much monthly income that would prevent you, by Indiana law, from receiving benefits, if I understand correctly. So, that's, if I understand correctly, that's kind of the crux of this, this morning, is that correct, Mr. Coleman?
That's correct.
So, why don't you go ahead and, and walk us through how you came to that determination, and how you came in contact with Ms. McKinstry, sir?
Thank you. Commissioners, um, my name is Sean Coleman, I'm the Portage Township Trustee with offices at one thirty-three North William and South Bend. Simply put, uh, Ms. McKinstry's application for assistance was denied because it was determined that she was over-resourced, or, uh, specifically that her income exceeded , uh, the levels of, of the federal poverty guideline, uh, levels that we are, uh, that we adhere to in making determinations about, uh, applicants who are eligible. In addition, there were no specific emergency circumstances in her case that would, uh, allow us, uh, any further consideration of her application beyond the, the standards specifically that are laid out. The standards themselves, you, I believe you have a copy of, um, are determined by the, uh, by the Township Board, um, in accordance with the state statutes that guide them. And, um, uh, as a result, uh, our finding was that, uh, Ms. McKinstry did not qualify, and, uh, we denied her application. I have, um, from our office, our supervising caseworker, Aaron DeBroski, who can add more detail, but most of what we would be presenting, uh, we provided to you in a letter, uh, synop- a synopsis letter that laid out the specifics of the situation that guided us to our denial.
So pursuant to the policies enacted by Portage Township, which were adopted in May of two thousand and nineteen, your most recent version that you provided to the Commissioners, the maximum net monthly income allowed under, uh, law is one thousand, twelve dollars for the individual, is that correct?
For household, correct.
Were there steps taken to confirm Ms. McKinstry's, uh, income?
Yeah, I, what I'm gonna do is, uh, turn to Aaron DeBroski to give some of the specifics on the process that was followed as she participated in this, uh, specific case.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman.
She came in to seek assistance, um, she was given a list of everything that she needed. At that time, we didn't have check stubs, so she was sent out to get check stubs. The check stubs came by fax, the last two, and you'll see attached. And she came back two days later, on the eleventh, to see a caseworker, and that's when it was determined that she was over-income and gainfully employed during the time the bills were acquired.
And they confirmed that her income was approximately twelve hundred dollars net monthly for the period of, of time at question, is that right?
Correct, that was one check we could use within the last thirty days, but in the whole picture, during the time the bill was acquired, because her bills were over thirty-day balance, she was gainfully employed and over-income, if you use like the last two checks. And we didn't have any receipts, she was asked to bring in receipts, so we had nothing to show any circumstances that she had to do with her income. She receives food stamps, those just started, and the house is paid for, so.
Do the Commissioners have any questions for either of the representatives from Portage Township?
I have comments. And, uh, and, and one might, first one might sound like a question, Ms. McKinstry. Some people who file appeals don't quite understand what the appeal process is. I wanna make sure you understand that, understand what rules we operate by, what rules they operate by.
Okay.
And, uh, sometimes people think appeal is like a second chance, you know, a redo, okay? Our hands are legally bound, I'm gonna call, I was called Rule Three, that we're based the appeal is to make sure that the trustee's office followed their own rules as they are stated in, and followed the state of Indiana. The state of Indiana puts rules on Township Trustees, and the Township Trustees can make them stronger. And usually in like Portage and Pen Township, where there's a lot more need, and there's less money, uh, the rules are usually, usually more stricter. So, um, our, our ability here is not to retry or review, except to review that they respected your rights as a citizen, and they followed their rules as stated by law, okay? So I want you to understand that. So basically, by Rule Three, I've got a, uh, Mr. Fleming, I have to say, did they follow their own rules? Well, right off the bat, because of income, uh, unfortunately, your income level is higher than their, than the, the maximum amount, okay? Now, I did note, uh, I will chastise the trustee's office a little bit, because, uh, on the one paper I received, we received, reason, comments, reasons for denying, is completely blank. I think that, uh, was probably an error on somebody's part, uh, and that was under the issue of gas. Uh, the next item, electricity, it says for gas and electric. Now, it might be in your office shop talk and, and procedures, but you can maybe put comments only in one area. I would think it'd be more clear to everybody, if you have a comments area regarding a matter, you specifically have listed there, I don't know if you found that page that I'm referring to? Mr. DeBroski?
Yes, I'm looking now, under the comments.
Is yours blank, as mine is?
No. Mine has comments, PTT not aiding with the gas-electric, as she was over-income and gainfully employed during the-
That's, Ms. DeBroski, that's the second item, look at the above item regarding gas.
Okay, that's just the way that our system is set up, our computer system, she was denied for this, I understand, it's, it's blank under the gas. I understand what you're saying.
I would consider that poor communication, but is that a violation of your policies? I don't think so.
Well, ju- right, had your gas has been denied.
I would think in the future, you might have that corrected, uh, so there's, there's better communication, 'cause I know you wanna communicate with people.
Totally, no, Commissioner, thank you.
But I, I just, and, and when you have over-income and gainfully employed and all that other stuff, I think just the fact that over-income right away, the case is kind of resolved on that issue.
I still think we need to hear from Ms. McKinstry.
Oh, well, certainly, and, and Mr. Fleming, and, uh, but I, but I wanted to make sure that, uh, my, you know, as you asked, that the comments are made, and they understood what appeal really means. It's not that we can retry this, we just gotta make sure they followed the law, you know? Thank you.
Is there anything else from the trustee's office?
None, present.
Ms. McKinstry, what would you like to say about the-
Thank you for having me, first of all, listening to me, but, um, I, I work for the school corporation as a bus driver. We're done in June, and, um, yeah, they had check stubs from when I was working, but I came to them in July. We don't go back until the next week, so, um, yeah, I, I, I made, you know, twelve hundred dollars before I, before I came to them, yes, I did, but, uh, I had all my receipts and everything, they didn't ask me for not one. When I came back, this, on, on the, two days later, they didn't ask me for one, they denied me right away. They said I was over-income and denied me right away, which I feel like that's wrong- They said I was over-income and denied me right away, which I feel like that's wrong, because I'm a government worker. I work hard, you know, and I don't come to them all the time. And, you know, this time I needed some help with my utilities, regardless to what I did with the bill before the month that I came to them. I mean, you know, I'm a human being first and foremost, and things happen, being a human being, like your car breaks down, or your water heater goes out. Things happen. So, you know, I'm a manageable person. I usually manage my bills. I don't come to them every month. But at this particular time, I needed help, so I went to them. But they turned me down. The last time I came to them was years ago. They turned me down as well. And I feel like that is wrong. If I'm coming to you and I have proof of my income that I, because that's the way they did it back in the past. If you had proof of your income, they helped you. You know, what you spent your income on, and I did that. I went everywhere they asked me to go. I did everything they asked me to do. I was just, I had disconnect notices for my gas, my electric, and my water, but I figured out my water bill myself. I paid that myself. But my gas and my electric, I needed help, so I went to them, and they turned me down. So I don't feel like that's right, because I've done everything they asked me to do.
Do you feel like you didn't have $1,200 in revenue?
I had that before I came to them. I got out in June. June the 7th or something like that was my last day. I came to them in July. So like I said, from that point to that point, I needed some assistance.
What is your income then, after June 7th?
Nothing.
Okay. And then what is your decision to determine, you know, is it an average income for the year? Or is it just the month that she's requesting?
So the standards of the Portage Township trustee that I'm looking at from May of 2019 says an applicant who does not exceed the total monthly household income listed below in the previous 30-day period. So she applied in July, so the lookback is 30 days from that date. So the township did confirm on June 7th payroll of $1,200, and then June 21st of 2019 for $1,200. So in that 30-day window, just unfortunately, she met the, she was over-income as the trustee's-
So she would've done it August?
August, August is when you should file.
Would that have helped her then?
She could essentially would have no income, revenue the 30 days prior.
Well, I have been unemployed since June, and this is now August. So I still need help with my utilities. So this is the thing. What are we gonna do now?
Have you applied for August or any of the months after that?
They turned me down, and they said, you know, I was over-income, so I really needed to come here and figure out what my next move was, because, like I say, I-
So you haven't worked since June last year?
June this year.
This year, right. Yeah, I work for the school corporation. We don't go to school after June until August. So I am the working, of the working poor, one of the working poor, but I do manage my business. I just needed some help at this time, because I had a lot of things that broke down on me that I had to utilize my money for.
Counselor, excuse me, Honorable Trustee, hearing that she had no income in the month of July now, and she, if she applies for August, and her understanding this 30-day retroactive rule, would she qualify for August benefits?
Well, that would be determination by, that would be determined by the application process.
Yeah, so she'd have to start that, she'd have to apply for August, but if she had zero revenue, in theory, she would qualify, correct?
Her 30-day balance, maybe?
I'm sorry?
A possible.
Yeah, go ahead, Aaron.
She might, would qualify for a 30-day balance, because in the last 30 days, she had no income. But other than that, the rest of the bill, the 60 and 90-day was acquired while she was gainfully employed and over-income.
You would not cover the retroactive billing?
No, no, we could only cover a 30-day period, which is the period she had no income for.
Do you understand that?
No, I don't, because I had no income from June. Okay, I had income, I mean, in July, when I came to see them, I had no income. Okay, that bill was still that bill. You know what I'm saying? I had a disconnect for that bill. So this is now August. I still have that same, because I called them and was telling them my situation, and they allowed me more time, but I still have that same bill.
Right, but it sounds like they will, they don't pay the retroactive bill, the acquired, the old debt, if I may. They will only pay the, throw you back 30 days, when you have no revenue to offset it, okay? So when you, for the last 30 days, you have no revenue.
Right.
Now, for August, so if you reapply now, odds are you might, you may qualify. But again, they're not gonna pay the full utility bills. They would only pay the portion attributable to the last 30 days or approximately, when you had, you were in the income level threshold, that time span. Now, on your other debt, you know, you could try other churches. There's an organization called Stone Soup. I don't know if you've heard of Stone Soup. Are they out of business?
We have, we have a list of agencies that we refer people to who-
Say Vincent Neapol.
Yeah, that's right. And, and again, respectfully, the application process would determine the eligibility, eligibility for Ms. McKinstry, just as it would for anyone who comes in and applies for assistance. We, we've provided, we've provided, we've put it in units, 937 units of assistance this year. And those that we deny are approximately 10% of that, a little more than 10%. And the total amount of dollars that we've provided in assistance this year exceeds $119,000 thus far, which supersedes the amount given for the entirety of 2018. And we, we would have been ready to assist Ms. McKinstry if she had qualified. The question over receipts or specific receipts that we would have reviewed to make a determination if there was a specific emergency, we, we did not see.
I had them on me.
I'll let Ms. DeBrowski comment on that further, but I just wanna make it clear that if Ms. McKinstry were to come to our office today, we could not make a promise of assistance, but that she could go through the application process. And if she were, and if she qualified, and again, the reason that she did not qualify was because they, she received a paycheck within that 30-day period, okay, of when she had come in to ask for assistance, that put her over the federal poverty level that would have allowed us to provide assistance to her. And there was no specific emergency that we could identify that would provide us with an additional reason for considering her application.
Ms. McKinstry, do you have something to add?
The only thing that I wanna add is, is that I feel like if they hadn't have denied me right when, right in the beginning, and I didn't even get my butt in the seat, and she told me they had to deny me because of my income. I had the receipts in my purse, so, because I know how they work, so I had the receipts on me. I had everything they asked me for. But my thing is, I don't know how they could not help me when I don't have income. I have none.
Right.
I have none.
The system is that they go through the previous month, so.
Some of these rules are based on state law.
Yeah.
So, so, but now I think you, I think you better understand the rules now. They're gonna, the date you file them goes back 30 days, and if you file now, in theory, you have no revenue, because you're telling me you have no revenue, Mr. Fleming, you have no revenue. So in theory, you should automatically, you should qualify for those reasons. But when you do, if and when you do qualify for the month of August, they are still not gonna pay the retroactive debt.
See, that's where I'm confused on.
That's something, well, now, now you're not confused, right?
I'm confused, because, okay, so you're just, does that mean, I mean, I'm slow, call me slow. Does that mean that the past due balance, they're not paying, they're just paying the current?
That's what it sounds like.
Because in my-
And they will mail a check to the utility company.
Yeah.
And the utility company will probably apply to the old debt, but that's not, that's not your fault or their fault.
Okay, okay.
And, Mr. DeBrowski?
Could I just give an example? When she was in on July 9th, the due date on the electric bill was 7/11. The previous, at that time, was 186.50, so we could not consider any amount of that. Her current bill at that time was $58.89. If she came in in August, that would be the 30-day amount. That's the only amount that we could consider. The due date on the gas was July 14th. The previous was 101.95. We could not consider any of that, just the current bill of $23.29. If she's eligible, those would be like your 30-day amounts.
But this is August, though.
I know. I understand that.
So you wouldn't consider any of the August?
No, because you've already been denied that portion, because, well, for the July, it's included in your August bill, but you-
No.
But you understand that now, right?
I don't understand. I'm trying to understand.
Well, I want you to understand, yeah.
It's not that I don't, it's not that I don't like it, it's just I'm trying to understand.
I want you to understand.
So usually y'all pay a, y'all can only pay a disconnect if you have a disconnect normally.
Your past due. Here, let me show you your bills. Maybe that helps with you seeing.
Now, that was when I, what I brought in in July.
Right, this is what you brought in in July.
Now, I've had, I got another bill.
You will pay a disconnect? You will not pay a disconnect?
That's their standard. They only do disconnect.
It has to be a previous bill. It has to be a two-month bill.
Okay.
So sometimes it's just a regular two-month bill, and they're not in disconnect. Sometimes a double bill gives them a disconnect amount.
You guys should meet up, and that way you can explain to her, you know, the process is now, and then she can-
I just wanna make sure she understands that, that the debt that she was denied on, we can't go back. It's gonna be the small 30-day amounts.
But see, I'm not understanding. How is that going to help the bill? How is that gonna help the bill?
It's just gonna lower your bill. It's not gonna relieve your total debt, but it will lower the bill a little bit, and then you can get a referral and try the neighborhood agencies, Stone Soup, Salvation Army.
Okay, so what you're saying to me is, I'm just trying to be clear.
Good, I understand.
So what you're saying to me is, from June, July, nothing. Just-
It was your current bill for July, which would now be past due for August, because July, you had no income.
So the 50, the 58 is all you would pay on the electric?
That was, is that the electric, or, yes, that was on the electric, and the gas would be like $23, correct? And then it's just gonna lower your debt.
Those aren't the local bills, the most recent bills, are they?
Right, no.
I think you, you would probably need to assess the most recent bill.
Well, I'm just saying, that would be when she came in in August, what her July bill-
She came in in August?
No. If she comes in in August, what her current bill was for July will be her 30-day past due.
Bring, bring in the new bills, and then let them assess it and see what that might change.
Yeah, because my new bill's a whole lot, even the past due is a whole lot more than 50 and 20.
Because August, it has gone up more because of the weather.
So I wanna make sure you understand why you're probably gonna lose your appeal, okay? Because they follow their rules, and you're gonna understand, hopefully understand their rules, that they go back 30 days. So if you're, if you're to file now, odds are, you probably, if you truly have no revenue, or under $1,100 or something for the previous 30 days, it will help you for the current portion, but not the retro.
Not the current, she said.
Not the, well, not the old, not the old.
She says it is-
When she comes in for August, it would be the 30-day previous balance. Those are the amounts that I said.
That's the new current utility bill due, not the previous, previous month.
The new current that's due.
Right.
Okay, the new current that's due, because that's 99.
Okay, no, it was the current bill for July, not her current bill for August. We don't pay current bills.
Okay, for July.
So it's the current bill for July, which would be her 30-day past due on her August bill.
Well, at least you get something paid.
Mr. Jilney?
No, I, I do. I think they ought to meet up and see how it can help, maybe a petition can be set up.
Trustee does have emergency powers, but like you said, it didn't apply.
That's correct. And again, Ms. McKinstry would be welcome to return to our office and apply again, and to evaluate whether or not she was eligible for assistance.
Let me ask you a question before we go. The question is, since you're only paying from that booklet that you have, do I still need to go out and get fresh, new everything?
You need your utility bills for August and the food stamp referral, because those are monthly.
Why, when you're only going on that?
Because the state law requires that we verify your food stamps monthly.
But I can get that, but you have my bills that you're only paying.
I have your July bills. I need your bills with your due date for August, because that's the month we're paying now. That's the month we're in.
So you're not paying the 58 and the 23. You're not paying that. You're paying a different amount when I bring you the-
It'll still be those amounts, but I, you were already denied these July bills. You have to be billed again and bring me your most current bills.
You understand what I'm saying?
And that's what I would say, too, is bring her the, your most recent bills, and that way they can reassess it and then pay for what they can pay for based on that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And-
Thank you. Counselor, if you wanna add, I'm sorry, do you wanna add something to the closure?
Again, Ms. McKinstry, if, if you have receipts, please let us know that you have them, so that we can evaluate those as part of the process.
I don't have any income, so I wouldn't give you a receipt. I have been off work since June, so I don't have any income. So all I have is disconnect notices. I have those that I can bring you again to put in that pile.
Counselor, you wanna wrap it up?
Yes, just peaking from comments, it sounds like a motion to deny the appeal and ratify the decision of the township trustee would be appropriate. It sounds like also a lot of ground was covered this morning as beneficial with Ms. McKinstry, and the trustee is willing to work with it, so.
Thank you, Counselor. Yeah, it's not, it's not our job to make sure you understand. We want you to know. So that way you, and he wants you to know, and she wants you to know, so you can be more successful in the future. And you can, and you can share that knowledge with others to help them be more successful, and making sure everybody help as many people as possible. So Madam Engineer, Commissioner, Engineer, Commissioner, Doctor, I make a motion, she's a doctor also. A doctor make a motion that we deny the appeal based on the facts that the income levels, trustee has followed, their policies are stated by law.
Right, and I second that. So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Motion adjourned.
Ms. McKinstry?
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you.
If we can, if we can help you.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Take care, Counselor, have a motion.